Okay, the time is 6:30 PM. Welcome, welcome to our Poetry Town Council meeting for our beautiful town of Poetry, Texas on January 23rd of 2023. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. Your opinions, suggestions, and comments in favor of or against a topic are welcome. At this time, I need to remind the public that a disruption of this meeting may be considered a criminal offense according to Texas Penal Code 3813 and 4205. You must be signed up to speak during the meeting and stay on topic according to state law. To preserve the order and decorum of the meeting, any person who makes profane, slanderous, threatening remarks that becomes disruptive during the meeting will be asked to leave or may be escorted out by a peace officer or given a citation. At this time, volunteer clerk Robin Bowles will take roll call.
Mike Jaffe?
Here.
Diane Vincent?
Here.
Tara Zankovich?
Here.
Terry Fowler?
Here.
Simmons White?
Here.
That's extra loud.
Here.
They're all here.
Okay, thank you, and quorum is confirmed. This is our 33rd meeting, and I was realizing we have had perfect attendance because we had council member Vincent by telecom, so anyway, for what that's worth, 33rd meeting. Okay, so we want to thank council member Anderson for installing the frost flee faucets at the town hall site. Thank you very much. I also want to request if you see road potholes or anything that needs to be repaired, please don't feel like you're complaining. That helps us to do better, and so if you file a road report, that actually helps us to do better. So I know some people have refrained from doing that, they don't want to complain, but it does help us to be proactive. I can't drive all the roads every week, and so that does help us. So if you could go online to poetrytexas.org and file a road report, and that's how we prioritize what roads get repaired, so thank you for that. At this time, we have a memorandum that we promised would get completed in January. It is complete, the attorney has looked at that, and so at this time, if we have a council member who would like to read that.
Couple things, did we want to do the pledge and the invocation?
Yes, yes, we do. I apologize, I got out of order. Okay, so council member White is going to lead us in both of those.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we pray today for peace, peace in our town, peace in our hearts and wisdom in our minds, that we'd be given a fair and judicial mindset, that we'd see the different problems and the different solutions from all angles, and that your light would shine down on us so that we can work together as a community for the betterment of everybody, so that everybody can come out just more successful on the other side, and that this town would just be a blessing to everybody in it. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you, Samian?
And then as far as the report's concerned, I move that we move it to the regular agenda.
You moved that what?
We moved it to the regular agenda.
I think council... What do you think council on that? Okay, so initially, he talked about just making it a report, and then we were going to talk about an executive.
That was before the report was released in the manner it was released.
Okay, okay, so there's a motion to move that report to the number two agenda item. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Who got that first? I heard all three at once. So council member Vincent made the motion to move that report to agenda item number two, and I think it's seconded by, I heard Jaffe first, so all those in favor. All right, and we'll move that. Okay, so... If you're not already signed up on number two, then you're already signed up, Ms. Shelley. So, yeah. It remains number two. It's the same, nothing has changed, except for there's more items in number two. Okay, so at this time, we're going to, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551001, the town council will recess into executive session, a closed meeting, to discuss the following. Consultation with Attorney, Section 551071, to conduct a private consultation with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body, under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Board of Texas. Clearly, we have the rules of procedure relating to issues involving the incorporation election, upcoming election, pending legal invoices, legal advice on planning and zoning, right-of-way ordinance, and council legal training. The time is now 6:36. Okay, the time is now 9:27, we reconvene our regular session after our executive session. So right now, we have item number two, reconvene in an open session and take action, if any, on matters discussed in executive session. Council member Vincent?
The first item that I want to discuss is the release of the memo. Last week, I had said that the memo would be released after we got together as a group and made sure that, as a group, the town was willing to waive privilege, and it was released outside of that format. And so I just wanted to make sure that, since I made a public statement about it and that public statement was not followed, I wanted to make sure that the public statement that I made was the procedure that we were expected to follow, and that that is not the procedure that was followed. So there was not any deliberate attempt to mislead in how I stated how the memo was going to be processed.
So you're gonna, are you gonna state that it'll be put online?
Yeah, and so, yeah, it's been released in the package, so you should have it available to you. It's also going to be posted on the website, once we identify exactly where. There may even be a pop-up, as much as I despise them, leading to it, but we'll have it posted on the website for general review.
Okay, so further has been, has been vetted by our current attorney, and the council had one little amendment, it's a typo, so other than that, we'll be putting that up for all to see if they so choose.
There's one place where the word "and" appears with a D, and it should be "an" without the D, so I'll make that correction to the typo before posting it.
All right, then, secondly, council member Jaffe?
Okay, so mine was to discuss the upcoming election. I know there's been a lot running around about whether we were or were not meeting the obligations for the upcoming May election. Remember that in that election, all six of us will be up for vote, and I know there are others that are considering, and I hope will jump into the, into the contest. I have in my hand here a notice of deadline to file an application for placing the ballot. So this will be posted very soon at the town hall, indicating what days and hours you can drop off your, your application for running in the campaign. I will tell you, because all of us did it for the first time almost two years ago, if someone is interested in running for a position on the council, they need to become very familiar with the Texas Ethics Commission and their website. It has all the applications on it, how to fill it out. They have a phone number, and they're super helpful people. I mean, they will step you through. They want you truly, in my opinion, to succeed. I mean, even when you make mistakes, they'll help you fix it. So go out there, or tell the people that are wanting to run to go out there and get educated, and it'll tell you what to do, and very quickly. Part of, part of what's caused us to be a couple of days behind on this is we don't have a city secretary. None of us, as councilor, mayor, can accept your application. There would be a bias there, there would be a problem. We need an independent person, even though she works for the town, a secretary, to receive, process, and manage that material. So we had one for about four hours last week, and tragically, she ran into some conflicts, not quite clear what happened, but she's not our city secretary right now, so we are going to discuss one later tonight. But the city secretary here, as in a lot of other things we do, is probably like the most important person in the town of Poetry these days. I mean, there's just so many functions that we are paralyzed to accomplish without a city secretary. It's a critical, critical role, so I encourage you, if you have any dealings with whomever is our city secretary, please be really, really nice to them, because we are evidence that without them, everything comes to a screeching halt. Anyway, we're fine on the election, the election is going to happen as scheduled. If you want to run, file your paperwork, your name will be on the ballot. It's not going to be ruled invalid or illegal or anything else, it's, it's just fine. We're in a good place.
Okay, thank you, council member Jaffe. So thirdly, we have the right-of-way ordinance, it was in the packet. Last meeting, we did discuss it quite a bit, so we have, it has the words "draft" across it, we have gone over it quite in detail. So I know before we, the council, do you have any other comments on right-of-way? But we do need to have, allow citizens time to address any of these three things that we've discussed. So currently, if you, Tracy Hibbs? And the rest of you, if you would want to speak, please come up to the deck, so we don't have to wait for you to come up.
Tracy Hibbs, 9441 County Road, 2432. In the original incorporation election, where was, when was the first time any of the council members knew of any irregularities?
So according to legal counsel, I'm not supposed to answer any, we're not going to be answering any more questions, it's unfortunate, it has to be this particular one, but it'll be this time forward, we won't be, so if you have any questions, you can email, but we won't be answering any questions. And the document is a factual document, it will be posted online.
Okay, and about the election coming up in May, it was supposed to be posted on December the 19th. That's an election irregularity also.
As council member Jaffe, address that, we don't have a city secretary, we're trying to remedy that as soon as we can.
Tara, would you like for me to talk about the conversation I have with Secretary of State? Or are we done?
I, if it comes up again. Chad West? Chad McFarland? Robin Followwell? Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? All right, so let's go ahead and go with this right-of-way agreement, or excuse me, right-of-way ordinance. Is there any other further discussion on this?
Well, I guess I would throw in, I know we've talked about it a couple of times, that for the public's benefit, one of the things that we discussed upstairs, are a couple of things. One, it's important that we put something in place to manage the use of the right-of-ways in our town, right? Spectrum right now, Bruce and them, praise God, are bringing us decent internet, and for the most part, appear to be doing all the right things, right? They seem to be, but that doesn't guarantee that other people working in our right-of-ways would do the same, right? It wouldn't be unreasonable that they might come in and start cutting our water lines or damaging telephone lines or other things, right? So we've got to get some, some order to what's been a little bit the Wild West, and I think the document that we have in front of us that we're discussing is a really good start, and probably includes everything we'll ever need. And it's going to be up to us, though, to figure out how we apply this to people as they come into our town to do work, right? Because there's a lot of different things, and I know it's a little scary, and we talked about this, to some of the longstanding people, like the power companies, like, oh my gosh, you're gonna start enforcing new rules? No, we're not gonna run the power companies out of town, we need them, and they want to be here, but we are going to require that they follow, as best we have them documented, the same rules that everybody else is gonna follow, because it's not a big deal now, but it's going to get to be a bigger and bigger deal over time, as more and more people want to use that same little pathway to get their services in here. So I think it's a good document, and I think it's, we're probably a little late on passing it, but we've been busy with some other things, but it's, I think it's important that we get this in place, and we start putting a little bit of order to things as we grow and get bigger.
And one thing that was stated, it does apply to utilities, it doesn't apply to, you know, the residents necessarily.
No, yeah, we're not, we're not trying to regulate, well, although there's other things that have to do with what you're allowed to do on pipeline right-of-ways and in right-of-ways and all of that, you never want to build a house in a right-of-way, for example, because it's gonna be a temporary dwelling, because you can't, but yeah, we're not regulating whether you can plant wildflowers and all of that. This has to do with people trenching in fiber, horizontal boring, overhead aerial, that kind of stuff.
Okay, and it does not include a fee structure, that would have to be by resolution, possibly another meeting. So, so do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we accept the, the resolution for...
The ordinance.
The ordinance for the town of Poetry that we discussed for right-of-way management regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Anderson, seconded by Jaffe, to accept the right-of-way ordinance as written. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, so moving on to number three. Report and accept Amanda Bunch resignation submitted Thursday. So she worked four hours and then called on Wednesday night and said, she had left her personal calendar there, she was planning on coming in 9:00 AM next morning, she just said, well, she was concerned about all the turmoil in town, and she felt like in a couple years, it might be something she could do, but right now, she didn't want to deal with all that. So we do have a resume from Janice Shelton. She is retired city manager for the city of Crandall. She started out as a city secretary and worked, I believe, 22 years, is that correct? Okay, so go ahead and come on up, so everyone can meet you, Ms. Shelton. So as council member Jaffe said, we'll be really nice to you.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, you're welcome. Hello, Mayor and Council, it's nice to meet you. As Tara said, I'm Janice Shelton, was city manager at Crandall, worked there for 21 years, started out as a city secretary, worked as city secretary for about 16 years, and then the last six, I was the city manager. Crandall was small, is not small anymore, grows and is growing rapidly, so I retired, and I've spoken, spoken with Tara several times, and I understand what you guys are going through right now, and I just want the opportunity to help you out at this time.
Well, you're the first applicant we've had that had former experience, so that's needed, I believe, that's gonna be just a godsend, so.
So Janice, you have on here, you're retired, is this sort of like, this opportunity, is this just something to kind of do part-time to keep you in the mix?
Yes, sir, I do not want to do a full-time, but part-time sounds good to me.
Wow, that's a, that's a huge one for us, good.
So right now, the hours are about 15 hours a week, that's what is, or?
Right now, we're approved for up to 15 hours a week, and the council, I think in the previous December meeting, I think it was, said that, you know, as time goes along, we might need a little bit more, but as the budget allows, you know, we'll just, we're trying to stay within budget.
Is that in the ballpark of the hours that you're looking for? Do you, I know that we really need somebody with experience, do you feel like 15 hours a week, you could make a substantial impact?
I certainly hope so, once I get in there and find out what we're looking at, but I think so, that's where you are today.
For sure.
How did you find out about the position?
Actually, I worked with the city manager, James Strowman of Talty, and he told me that Tara was looking for someone, the city of Poetry was actually looking for someone, and it was a perfect fit, so.
I think your qualifications are really superior, and we could use the help, the advice, we're naive, we did it, and you have a lot of experience that I think would be very valuable for us.
Well, thank you.
So, yes, I fully support you in offering to do this, and I'm happy to have you here. I hope everything works.
I certainly do, too. Once you have municipality in your blood, it's hard to get it out, so once, once a servant always, you know, you're always looking to help out cities, for sure.
Well, we really appreciate your offer.
Absolutely. Are you easily scared off?
No.
Apparently, that's a job for her. Seen a lot of everything.
Thick skin, as a city manager, you learn to have a thick skin.
Well, and I think it's, it's wonderful to see someone who, and do you know, I know it's probably, since you've been city manager, how, do you think it'll be an easy adjustment to go to city secretary, because I know you were handling so much, and then, of course, you were city secretary, you said 16 years?
Right.
So, you know, there's the QuickBooks accounting, and the city secretary position is such a unique position, because not only do you have to do the bookkeeping and accounting, but you also have, you know, the minutes and the legal ordinances and the resolutions, so it's really kind of a catch-all type of position, and then is your notary public, is it current, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Notary is current, I am a Texas-registered municipal clerk, certified, certification is good for another two years, also, I'm a certified public manager.
For the last six years, you've been doing heavy on the management side. Do you have word processing, QuickBooks, and, you know, the fundamental skills of the city secretary?
I do, actually, about a year before I retired, our city secretary actually quit with two weeks' notice, so I filled in for her till we, we got another one, so I was city manager, city secretary for a while.
Okay, any other questions for her?
Do you consider yourself as overqualified for this role as I consider you? I mean, are we coming at this from the same angle?
I'm not over, I am qualified, yes, I wouldn't say overqualified, because once you've worn both those hats, there are a lot of luck. Management is totally your responsibility, the buck stops there, but city secretary and city manager are a lot of luck, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, it'll be very similar here. Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Okay. So we do have some citizens, Tracy Hibbs, Chad McFarland?
Chad McFarland, 19850 FM 986. I think this town desperately needs someone like Ms. Shelton, so I want to talk about the lack of financial information that the council has been given to make any kind of decision involving dollars. There hasn't been a report produced by this town in two months showing how much money's been spent out of the payroll budget. There hasn't been a report produced by this town that shows what our total income is and how that income is meeting projections. So without that kind of information, I don't understand how you can make any kind of financial decision, and it kind of scares me that I feel like I'm the only one up here that is raising questions about how the finances of this town is being reported. Hopefully, Ms. Shelton can cure some of these shortfalls, but I think the council needs to be asking these questions, too. Why aren't y'all getting this information? Amazing I was able to speak.
Robin Followwell?
Robin Followwell, 10658 County Road, 2400. I think that y'all could, of course, learn a lot from her, with us being a small town, so I just really hope you will take it into consideration when she says, hey, this is how things should be done, this is state law, it applies to small, not just big cities. She's gonna know backwards and forwards what needs to be done, so when she suggests something and says, hey, this is what we should be doing, or we should adopt this, or look into this, please listen to her, and don't just brush it off as we're a baby town, we don't have to go by that. She knows it backwards and forwards. I've talked with her, I think she will be wonderful this, for this, if you will just listen to her and let her help you do it correctly.
Thank you, Robin. Shelley Smith?
Has anything on the job description changed from last week?
Our legal counsel has said that we are not to answer questions. Okay. Patrick Smith? Okay, so is there any other council discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we, I guess first, accept the resignation of Amanda Brunch, and then secondly, we accept Ms. Janice Shelton as our new secretary.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by White, to, two things, to accept resignation of Amanda Brunch, voted in last week, and now accept Janice Shelton for the vacancy of city secretary. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Welcome to the team. All right, number four, discuss and take action on Kaufman County Project Sheet Number Three. So submitted this request originally back in October, we did get this finally, it wasn't in time to get it on the last meeting, but we have it here now, so it is 6520, and this is to do hot or cold mix with a four-man crew on Gate Lane, Fourpost Lane, 323, and Green Meadows Lane. So, any comments? And I did go, so it was, I did go ahead and spray paint a lot of the holes, because they're hard to see at night, and the last thing I want is someone to have issue at night, hitting it and ruining their whatever, their alignment or whatever, so that was, that was me that spray painted, so my hope is that, again, on the roads, you're helping us if you file a road report, please don't feel like you're complaining, so we want to address these as quickly as we possibly can. So we have...
Just, just to be clear, because we've had this problem before, this includes the sides of the roads and any holes in the middle of the road?
It's supposed to. You know, they have different crews, and I don't manage those crews.
Well, I know, but we talked about this last time, and I think the comment was, well, we have to define what needs to be fixed.
So I can add, you're right, I can add on there, to be more specific... So I can add, you're right, I can add on there, um, to be more specific, um...
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see, uh, on like the pothole repair, any hole over two inches in, you know, diameter or something.
Okay.
You know, just, because I know I've gone through some of the roads where they've patched, and they've patched the ones that have the, the spray paint around them and left something, you know...
Equally bad.
Equally bad, or something that will be bad in a month of good rain, you know, so, um, yeah, and concentrating on the, or adding the, the edges of the roads would be great. But who makes the call whether or not it's hot or cold mix, or cold or hot mix?
Well, we, we know that, um, Hunt County doesn't have the capability for hot mix, so, um, to be fair, we've, we've done hot or cold mix, I imagine that would be Erin Conway, the supervisor, if the hot mix machine is not available for some reason, um, then they have the option to do the cold mix, I suppose. But if council would prefer, I mean, it may delay it, the repair, and I will tell you, Green Meadows is pretty bad right now.
Well, I think we need to...
It's the worst road right now.
I think we need to keep that in our awareness moving forward, but right now, especially for posting gate, I mean, it's, they're, even, um, I'd say all of them are in pretty rough shape. Uh, 323 probably the, the most serviceable of these roads right now, uh, but still, it's, it's going fast. Um, but yeah, I just think we, if we really want Kaufman to use their hot mix machine, I, I think we should make sure that we nail that down in the future, but I, I don't think having that debate right now on these particular roads is the, the best time.
Okay. Um, I know they tried to, when they sent in an original, they tried to say, oh, well, use, use refurbished asphalt, and I said, no, that's not really what we're looking for, you know, so they, you know, I said, it needs to be, you know, hot or cold new asphalt, so. I mean, if you, you know, if you, if the council prefers to have it hot mix, I think it is a better product, but it could delay things, they only have one hot mix machine and, you know, a lot of miles to cover, so.
We've just heard it's a better product, so, again, moving forward, if, if we have that option, I think it's a good option.
Well, I think, uh, really, Brian, that's something on the 10th, when we meet with Kaufman County, that will be one of the points that we will raise, because we agree with you, we like the hot mix, but we need to have more discussion with Kaufman County just based on some recent comments from him.
All right, thanks.
So, this hasn't gone, this, this sheet hasn't been filled out and sent to them, I'm waiting for council approval, so I'm making some notes and I can add, you know, pothole repair and side repair, and then any hole over two inches, if council agrees with that, then, you know, I can add that to that. Okay, um, we have some comments from citizens, Tracy Hibbs, Chad West, Chad McFarland.
Chad McFarland, 19850, FM 986. Going to sound like a broken record on this, and there hasn't been a report produced by this town in two months showing how much has been spent on road repairs compared to the budget. And again, you guys have no idea, there's not been a report showing how the income of this town is meeting budget projections. So, I, I'm not speaking for or against the road repair, I'm just trying to point out, you guys aren't being given proper financial information to make proper decisions. Showing that there's money in the checking account is not the way to run a town. That's not the way to make decisions for a town. You need to know what the actual available funds are, you need to know how much has been spent versus the budget, you need to know that your income is meeting projections. So, thank you.
Robin Followill? Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? Okay, so, is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion, we accept the Kaufman County Project Sheet you just referenced.
With, with the amendment that it includes shoulder repair.
Yes.
With sides and shoulder, okay. And what about the comment, any hole over two inches diameter? It's pretty little, small, I think, I think on, um, Fourpost and Gate Lane, that's almost impossible. I, I do, it don't, you know, it's just the way that it is, the condition it's in, I don't know that that's possible.
Yeah, last time I went down Fourpost, I was afraid I was going to lose my car.
I mean, there's people, it's amazing to me, the people on that road have not even filed a report, so.
I'll, I'm second the motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by Benson, to approve this expenditure of KO3 for Kaufman County on our roads of 6520 with the amendment, pothole repair and size or shoulder repair using fresh asphalt, cold or hot mix for roads Gate Lane, Fourpost Lane, CR 323, and Green Meadows Lane. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, well, moving on to general public comments. Tracy Hibbs?
Tracy Hibbs, 9441, County Road 2432. We have three executive financial officers on this council. One would think the three of you would understand the fiduciary duty to such a significant job, to hold each other accountable to the daily and future financial responsibility of this town. If the one who's consistently writing the checks or balances of statements is not sharing that information with you prior to the town meeting, I wonder why sharing this information is not standard practice. Everyone is accountable to someone. Since it's not the, uh, people in the town, maybe it should be one of you who checks signing abilities. This person should be willing to share this information without being asked and it being brought up in a public forum. Should an issue arise with the finances, you will all be responsible. One would think the statement ending balance for October should match the beginning balance of November. Likewise, other errors in the statement, like a personal American Express being used for town business. How about the audit for this personal American Express? Overspending the allotted amount and using a personal credit card seems to be the standard with you. Not willing to hold this person accountable for actions such as these is just irresponsible. To great, to gain the respect of the people in this town, one would expect these individuals to be more forthcoming with the finances of the town they run. This has become a recurring issue of failed attempts to circumvent issues that will be the downfall of this town. We have spent enormous amounts of time and money on things which have not made a difference in the lives of people you, that live here. You have put the town at risk of losing everything you wanted. All I ask is moving forward that you hold each other accountable for the sake of those you serve.
So, a factual comment, 20, in 20 months, we've had, only three and a half months have we had a secretary that had any accounting experience. I'll leave it at that. Chad McFarland. Okay. Shelley Smith. Okay. Patrick Smith. Kevin Sinkovich. Okay, that's all of our general public comments. The time is now 9:59, meeting adjourned.